Hello and welcome to the candidate forum for Grant, Mayor, and City Council. I am Diane Doll, a member of the League of Women Voters of the White Bear Lake area from outside Grant, and I will be your moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the ballot on November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for these positions were invited to participate. And today, we have two mayoral candidates, Jeff Giefer and Tom Carr, and we have three councilmember candidates, Benjamin Cornet, Lindsay Cremona, and Tina Lobin. To begin, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening statement of up to one minute. Our timekeeper will show warning signs of 30 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. At that time, you may finish your sentence. For the opening statement, candidates will respond in alphabetical order. Thereafter, the order of speaking will be rotated, and I will call on you for each response. You will have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates, you do not have to use the full minute. You can just say what you have to say and be done. That may allow time for more questions. Today, we have up to 10 questions, and our recording may be one hour long. So I'll watch the time, and if we get within, oh, 10 minutes or so, I'll move us on to closing remarks. Each candidate may have up to three opportunities to clarify information or rebut another candidate's response. Each rebuttal is limited to 30 seconds, and a candidate may use only one rebuttal for each question. When questions are finished, candidates will have one minute for their closing statement, and that will be in the reverse order. The questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League of Women Voters members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature. We may consolidate questions in the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. All right, let's begin now with opening statements. And Candidate Carr, you'll be first for this one.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I've been on the City Council, actually ran for mayor in 2001, and been on the City Council for 22 out of the last 24 years. I grew up in Grant, my family's lived here. I'm just, I ran basically because of an issue, and I came, I'm coming back as mayor as an issue. And I think the issue, the biggest issue for me is just the communication with the residents and the city office and stuff, I think should be better. I think the Grant residents deserve better, they feel, they should feel it's more opening and welcoming, and I think we need to get more people to show up at the meetings and be involved. So that's why I'm coming back, I'm gonna keep Grant the same way it always has been that I grew up in, that my kids lived in, that my grandkids play in, and I think, I think it's gonna be, you know, good to come back as mayor and hopefully get the, get the, you know, all that back on the right track. Thank you.
Candidate Giefer.
Hello, my name is Jeff Giefer. After retiring from a successful 35-year corporate career in information technology, managing multimillion-dollar global projects, I'm ready to apply my leadership skills to serve the citizens of Grant as your full-time mayor. Throughout my career, I have brought together diverse teams, ensured fiscal responsibility, and delivered results, and I tend to do the same for Grant. Growing up in rural Minnesota, I was taught the values of hard work, personable, personal responsibility, and community service. These principles have guided my decisions on the Grant Planning Commission since 2016 and on the Council since 2019. As your mayor, I will prioritize fiscal responsibility of your tax dollars, safeguarding property rights, and preserving the rural character of Grant. I'm committed to being proactive, engaging with the state, county, and other governmental organizations, as well as securing state and federal funding for critical improvements like roads while also increasing transparency, encouraging resident engagement. By listening to the residents of Grant, we can ensure our community remains a safe, desirable, and affordable place to live. Together, we can make Grant better.
Thank you. All right, next is Council Candidate Cornet.
Hello, I'm Benjamin Cornet, and I want to thank the League for hosting this event. And I am relatively new to the area, I don't have the time here that Tom has, for instance. But it always, you know, as soon as I moved in here, it felt like home. Last year, I was flying 10,000 miles a month, and it felt like vacation coming home every time. So a little bit about myself, I'm a veteran, I was a 35 Papa Cryptologic Linguist in Chinese Mandarin. I also was a small business owner where we sold software to the government and, you know, helped them solve some of their hardest problems. The skills and things that I bring to the Council and what I can help with Grant is problem-solving, critical thinking, the ability to make a, you know, decision when it's critical. So I want to thank you again, the League, for hosting this event.
Thank you. Candidate Cremona.
Hi, good morning, I'm Lindsay Cremona, thank you for having us here today. My family and I moved to Grant a little over four years ago, and we moved here because we were looking for something very specific. We wanted a place that had big lots, country living, scenic views, and Grant is exactly that. So we did not move here by accident, we moved here very deliberately. And in fact, it took us a long time to find our house, it took us three years until we actually found our perfect place in Grant. And because it was so hard for us to find a place to live, I'm really invested in making sure that Grant stays the way that it is, because that's why I moved here, and I think that's why many of us moved here, is because we really enjoy country living. In my professional life, I'm an attorney, I practice real estate, landlord, tenant, and financial law, and the skills that I learned of being a litigator has really translated well to being a City Council Member, is I have experience working with opposing council and having those conflicting views that you can still have a professional and productive conversation to still move the ball forward. So I do look forward to having more discussions today about why I'm interested in being City Council Member for Grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
Hi, my name is Tina Lobin, and I am running for the City Council, Council seat. I did serve a term as a City Council of Grant during the 2012 election. I was elected and then served the four-year term after that, so I do have experience on working with the Council and with the staff and the residents. I have wanted to come back to the City Council for quite some time, and I had quite a busy schedule, and it has tamed down now, and I feel like that I can really give 100% back to the community that gives so much to me. I moved here 18 years ago. After growing up on my grandma's farm in the summers in northern Minnesota, I got a taste for what country living and hard work truly is. I love that, that was what I was looking for, I wanted to raise my children in an open environment that is the great outdoors where they can get outside and actually live and play and explore. I am very open-minded, I will listen to whoever it is that I have the great fortune of working with on the Council. I will listen to everybody's opinion and then work together to come up with a resolution. I believe that Grant should stay the same as it is now with regards to our density requirement. Our roads could use a little bit of refining. I will work for every single resident in Grant. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's move on to our questions now. And for the first question, Candidate Lobin, you will go first. Here's the question, in your opinion, what are the top three issues facing Grant, and what is your plan to address these issues?
My number-one concern is that the Planning Commission was disbanded. I would like to see it brought back. I would also like to see it be a larger group. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of people that have come forward and wanted to be a part of that, and so I hope to do some outreach and try to gather up people from all different backgrounds, all different acreage sizes, because some people have little tiny lots, and there are some people who have many, many acres on their properties. I want that diversity with people who own different-sized properties. The communication between city staff and Council, I know that when I was on the Council before, it was discouraged to contact staff. I believe that that is a ridiculous idea, and I think that the Council Members who have important questions that relate to a staff's proposal, their packets, what they're working on, I believe that we have, should have the ability to contact them. I also want to really get into the outreach of the community, open public input, and bring back that Planning Commission.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Cornet.
Okay, so my top three priorities are, one, keeping the developmental pressures, especially from our neighboring communities, at bay. I want to do that by preserving a lot of the density requirements and making sure that, for instance, if somebody wants to keep dirt roads, or the large majority of people want to keep dirt roads, that they are able to keep those dirt roads and to include the septic and private water systems. The second one is, I want to make sure that we continue to have good partnerships with our neighboring towns in which we, you know, hire our safety people, so our fire and police systems, and make sure that we keep those in place, because we want to make sure that we have those if we need them. And lastly, just enable a transparent and comfortable place for Grant to conduct its business. I know, I've heard from a lot of citizens, they don't feel that they're comfortable at the town hall, so making sure that they feel that way is very imperative. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Carr.
There's always more than three, but the density part, I think we've done over the years, I don't think any, there's nobody up here that I've heard or nobody running that is, or on the City Council that wants to change their density, so that's kind of set. And we've had some development, that's kind of limited how that could even happen anymore. But we have to be vigilant what other communities may want to do, our comp plan, we spell that out. I think just financially, we have to be careful in this economy that we keep our finances in order. I don't think that we have any issues right now, but you never know. I think our density requirements are, again, the same way, I don't want to change those, but also land rights for the development of any lots that have been here prior. I mean, there's hundreds of lots that were here prior to their five-acre minimum lot size, those people need to be respected and have exemptions for them, just as all two-and-a-half-acre lots have. And then the biggest thing, again, other people have said it, we just have to make the city office and everything else a more welcoming place. It, I don't, I think it's trended down over the last few years, and I think we need to bring that back, and that's what I'd like to do.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Can I ask for a rebuttal question?
Hold up your card.
Nope.
And then you can have 30 seconds. Okay.
Councilmember Carr, what specific changes are you?
Oh, excuse me, I, I made a mistake here, I should wait till everyone's answered the question, and then I will come back to you, Candidate Giefer. So it's your turn to answer the question, and then I will come back to you.
Okay, so one of the biggest issues we have, I think, is our roads. I have been campaigning for several weeks now, talking to residents, and one of the biggest things is the roads. And we've been so focused on being fiscally responsible that we haven't budgeted enough money for our roads. Most of our residents will say, hey, I'll gladly spend a little bit more on our local taxes, which are already low. You know, if we could bump up the taxes, the cost of a family night out for pizza, the most people are like, yeah, I would be in favor of that. And another thing we could do proactively for our roads, other than increase local taxes, is work to secure state and federal funding, which has never been done, as far as I know, by a mayor of Grant. There's a lot of funding programs out there, we could do 80 to 20 matches we could put towards our roads. The next thing is the, as other people have said here, the engagement and transparency of the Council, I do see also that we can do things to bring citizens more into the process and be more transparent, and that's one of the things I would like to do as mayor as well.
Thank you. Candidate Cremona.
Thank you. I've been canvassing since August, meeting our residents, seeing what's important to them, and the number-one thing I'm hearing is roads. There is a road policy in place that I think people either want to have better education on, or having it revisited and seeing what are some tweaks that we can maybe do to make it more efficient for our residents, because every door I knock on, it almost seems that someone's talking about the roads and what can we do about them. Another issue that I see that everyone, I think, on the Council, running for Councils talked about are the density requirements. I think all of us are on the same page that we like the fact of what our current lot size and density requirements are, and I hear that from our neighbors in Grant as well. Lastly, community involvement and transparency. Talking with the residents of Grant, they want more transparency, and so it is something that I would be committed to make sure that we do. We can also increase community involvement by re-engaging the Planning Commission, getting more people involved, getting more outreach of, you know, when the meetings are, and what's even being discussed by updating our website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now your rebuttal, Mr. Giefer.
Yeah, Councilmember Carr, you had mentioned that property rights and allowing property owners to do what they want with their properties. Can you specify what exactly you would change with our current Chapter 12 zoning ordinances that would give these property owners the freedom that you think they should have?
Yeah, first, well, that's an interesting question, because I can't change anything. It's a City Council decision. So I think what we've, we've seen, and we had a discussion on the June 25th Council meeting, and if people want to look at that, they can, where nothing was decided, lots of things were discussed, but people have land rights, they call it grandfathered, I don't think it's really the right word that the professionals would use, but if you had a lot split by the city years ago, then that lot is split by the city. Back in 82, when we went to our 10-acre density, 5-acre minimum, we did have exemptions for two-and-a-half-acre lots, you did have to combine them up to two-and-a-half if you own smaller lots, but those lots had exemptions, and I think anything smaller than two-and-a-half should have exemptions too. That's my opinion, but the Council would decide.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move on to question number two.
Am I 15 seconds to rebut his rebuttal?
No. Question number two, what steps will you take to ensure financial transparency and accountability in city government? And Candidate Cremona, you're first.
So steps to include financial transparency, I think part of it is just getting people involved and knowing, here's what we're talking about. So we have planning meetings, the Council does, prior to their City Council meetings, where they do discuss budgets, letting people know that that's an open forum that people can attend, and having people know that this meeting is even occurring by updating our website and going out to the people and reaching out to them. I've been posting our meetings on Nextdoor, so people are aware that they can come and attend, because people may not be going directly to the website, so let's go to the people. Where are people getting their information from? They're getting them from online apps, they're getting them such as Nextdoor, so let's go to them, so that they have the opportunity to see that. Also, updating our website to put more financial information on there that they can easily find, because it's their money that we're using, and they have every right to know what it's being used for.
Thank you. Next is Candidate Lobin, do you need the question repeated?
Yes, please.
What steps will you take to ensure financial transparency and accountability in city government?
Okay, so I'm gonna feed off of what Lindsay said as well, as far as like the meetings, so there are financial meetings, right? They are open to the public. When the Council does work sessions on the budget and such, that they're open to the public, I just went to the most recent one. So with that, I think that if we can make it known when these meetings are and get a little bit more of citizen participation to show up to these meetings and understand the budget and where the city's coming from, what expenses do we have, police, fire, roads, such like that, that they could be informed on, and also, the, the budget, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, nerves up here. The budget is out there and open for people to take a look at, right? And so they should be able to contact any of the Council Members or Mayor, right, and ask questions about that budget, give us their input so that we can use that when we are making that budget.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Giefer.
Yeah, so the transparency part, I think Lindsay touched on this, we need to start getting people more engaged, we need to proactively reach out to residents to make sure their voices are heard. Several ways to do this, but it'd be super easy and effective, just to set up a Facebook page, which would be easy to maintain and allow almost real-time communication between residents and the city. The city could provide information or ask input, and there could be a dialogue going back. And specifically to the financial transparencies, we could use Facebook or update the city's website to increase the awareness of the budget meetings that we have, which are open to the public. Normally, people don't attend, but I don't think they really know about it, so we could do more to promote the awareness of not only the Council meetings, but the budget meetings specifically.
Thank you. Mr. Carr.
I think we need to be more financially transparent by, first of all, in the budget, we have several line items like Council salaries or whatever, we don't need those described, but we used to, back in the day, it was a while ago, describe these line items as what they were, what they were for, so that all new Council Members coming in would know what they were, all residents would know what they were. What is this line for brushing, what is that, what is that for? The other thing is, all decisions for financial should be made by the Council. They should be made by the Council, and we're gonna get back to doing that when I get back in. So, and then just basically, just watch, our, our budget is a guess, and we need to follow that budget as well as we can, we can change it, and then as far as the roads go, I know that was brought up, residents need to be informed that roughly 10%, all they know is they get a bill from the county, and that's where we get most of our money, and 10% of that goes to all of Grant, half of that goes to other things, and maybe 20% of that goes to roads. So they need to know we don't get a lot of money, and we need to get the gas tax in Grant, and then we'll have a lot of money for the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cornet.
As a lot of the answers have already, I would just be repeating, to include engagement via social media, to include, you know, making sure we have information up on our website, and as Tom had said, you know, I can attest to line item descriptions of what's going on. The other thing I think we could do to really help is, for someone who's retroactively looking at why the decisions were made, or tape those budgetary meetings, so people can have an understanding of what was decided, and then have more insight going forward into the next budgetary meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you're gonna be first on the next one, Mr. Cornet.
Okay.
Question three, how would you approach working with the mayor and other Council Members who may not share your outlook on controversial or complicated issues? How would you deal with supporting decisions you do not agree with?
So in this, I think that diverse opinions on items are critical to success. I saw that with my own company, where they tried to limit that and then pushed everybody out who didn't do that, me included. So having an opinion counter the narrative is important, because that's how you actually can gain success, by listening to other people, by understanding their point of view, to see, maybe we can compromise on a point, or come to some sort of agreement where all parties are happier or less happy, depending on how you want to look at it. And, you know, it's not the worst thing in the world to not have the opinion of everybody else, and that's okay, and I think it's something that people should be okay with. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Carr.
Yeah, I think, over the years, I've done that with a lot of people, I think you have to be respectful when you're talking to people that don't agree with you. You have to use logic and reason, not emotion, to try to get to a place where there can be understanding. And a lot of times, when nobody, nobody's happy, maybe that means you won, you know, that everybody got something that they wanted. So I think that's what you strive for, I've had many people that totally disagreed with me, ran against me, got on the Council, and then at the end of the day, after a couple of years, we're pretty much in lockstep as what's good for Grant. So I think that's, that's a process, so, but you have to be respectful, you can't be, you can't be emotional, you can't drive people away because you don't like what a Council Member's doing, you shouldn't be after that person to push them out, you shouldn't, you should allow transparency for them to get the information they need from all our consultants, so that they feel like they're doing their job, they were elected by the city of Grant, that needs to be respected, the residents elected them, and so that should be respected. So that's what I would do.
Candidate Cremona.
So it's really important to have a whole host of opinions that may not always agree, because I've found in my profession, that's a good way to kind of work out the kinks and say, okay, are we looking at all the angles, are we making sure we're covering all our bases? Because that's how sometimes you can find that you can still get to the same end result, but there's many different paths, and so making sure you're exploring all those and listening to all of everyone's opinions, you can find perhaps the best route that maybe wasn't the route that you initially thought to have. So it is, I'm the person that wants to encourage people to have those differing opinions, so we can work through them together. And also making sure you have that conversation respectfully and productively, that's extremely important, especially at City Council, where we're representing approximately 4,000 people. Those 4,000 people aren't always gonna have the same opinion, and still encouraging them to come to the meetings so that they're able to give their voice. But at the end of the day, once a decision is made, and making sure that, as a Council Member, you respect that decision, you respect that majority vote, and allow everyone to move ahead in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
So I think the biggest thing about working with people that may have opinions that you differ with, the most important thing to that is to actually listen, listen with an open mind, because somebody else may have come up with an idea that never crossed your mind, you hadn't thought of, right, you might see things differently. Listening to one another up there at the Council table quietly, intently, hearing what they have to say is also important. I know that when I was up there before, there was a lot of people talking, and then there's talking to your neighbor, and then there's writing, and there's all this doodling, and people aren't really truly listening. So if you actually can set yourself quiet, open your mind, and listen to what the others have to say, I believe that we can come up with a solution, right, to work together. Whether you disagree or agree with somebody or not, you still need to listen to their ideas and value their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Yes, I think it's important for all the Council Members to have independent, critical thinking when they bring it to the table. I mean, in the past, we've seen factions where there was a majority and minority, and then the two people in minority would be fighting against the majority, and, and they weren't being listened to or respected, and that just led to a lot of chaos and dysfunction, I think. Former Mayor Carr can attest to that when he was mayor. And so we need to get away from the factions and, again, listen to the other side, and if they don't have the same ideas, just be respectful and courteous, and be diplomatic with the interactions amongst the Council Members. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, moving on to question four, and Candidate Giefer, you'll be first on this one. What skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be the mayor of Grant?
Yep, so I just recently retired after a 35 professional career as an IT guy, I led multimillion global projects, working with diverse people throughout the world, so I've had a lot of experience dealing with resistance and different, differing viewpoints and different agendas, and I've been able to bring people together in a collaborative manner and get things done. And additionally, I do have six years experience on the Council and two years under Planning Commission before that, and I've learned a lot of things in that time, and I bring those skills forward and be in the next mayor.
Thank you. All right, next, Candidate Cremona, what skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be City Council Member in Grant?
Thank you. So what really makes me stand out is probably my enthusiasm and motivation for this role. I actually reached out to our city clerk in early spring, indicating that I was very interested in running for City Council, and I actually started attending meetings in the spring, because I am very excited to be, have an opportunity to represent and serve our community. I've been canvassing and meeting our, our communities every weekend since August, and so I think that enthusiasm has really, will show how dedicated that I am to this position to help serve our community. In addition, I have a lot of experience working with a team. As, I'm a den leader for the Cub Scouts for our local troop, so I've experienced working with other adults to help move a program forward, also as PTA president for two years for our school, where I got to help lead and plan large events. So I've experienced working and highlighting other people's skills so we can come to a common goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
Could you please repeat the question?
Will. What skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be City Council Member in Grant?
Thank you. Skills that qualify me to be on the, back on the City Council is, one, as I said, I served a four-year term, so I'm familiar with how things work at the Council within the city. four-year term, so I'm familiar with how things work at the council within the city. I have had my own business for 38 years. 18 of those have been in Grant. So, I know the comings and goings and how the business works in Grant, how to keep things quiet, traffic down. I just, some of the businesses are going to, you know, have to go through their CUPs and have the traffics controlled. We've had issues in the past with, like, semis coming into the rural residential area. So, those kinds of things I'm well aware of after doing this for 18 years here. I also run a nonprofit organization. I'm one of the board members of that. There are over 60-plus people, youth, all the way up through 70 years old. I actually set duties for them to do, to make this organization work, right, to make it fluent, to make sure that everybody is included and has a job and feels that they have part of this community and an opinion, right, as far as how it is run and how it works. It's a great team-building thing, and I think my experience of doing this for several years makes me qualified to work with, you know, our handful of people up at the council and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, candidate Cornet.
Hello. So, I'd say, being in military intelligence for the past decade, critical thinking, problem-solving, and working in diverse groups and sometimes relatively high-pressure environments is key. You know, when you're able to solve problems for local levels, it can always help. Small business, you know, helping run a small business, I was making sure to keep, in what would be a parallel hire, staff happy, making sure that your employees and the people who work for you understand their role, and that will help you make the best decision as a city councilman. And although it's relatively short time, my time on city council, I volunteered in May after a council member had moved away. My experience in city council has enlightened me to a lot of the things I need to know, to include, you know, a lot of the zoning issues and our comprehensive plan and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Candidate Carr for the mayor.
Yes. When I first ran for city council mayor in 2000, I didn't know anything, and I had a lot of people help me, kind of educate me, you know, the people who've been here a long time, which was good. I got a lot of information. So, now people think I know everything, and I don't. But, I do have a lot of experience that I'd like to carry forward to the city council. And I think just those years of being there, and also, I grew up in Grant. I mean, I love this place, and everybody that loves this place, you know, you're welcome for keeping it that way. Thank you for keeping it that way for so long, since 2000. I was a part of that. So, yeah, so I think I'd just like to come back. I'd like to get things back to where they were a couple of years ago and just keep Grant going. I mean, I think we've got a good group here, and I think it's good that people want to step up. But at the end of the day, you know, I think I could really help as mayor. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. For question five, Mr. Carr, you'll be first.
Sure.
What steps would you take to ensure general maintenance and repair of the city's roads? Do you believe the annual budget to maintain Grant roads is sufficient? Why or why not?
Yeah, I think it gets back to educating people about how much money we actually have for our roads. As I said before, on a county tax statement, about 10% of that goes to Grant, for rough numbers. Half of that goes to police and fire that we get. 25% at least goes to whatever. I mean, by the time you're done slicing it up, I mean, Grant roads don't get that much, but it's always been our policy that the residents would help contribute to their own roads, as far as the pavement part of that. Also, I really stumped for getting people to get out there for the census because if we could push to get our 5,000 people in Grant voters, residents, that we could get gas tax money, which is a small community we do not get. We did get some money from the state. That was nice, and we're trying to use that. But I think until there is a real clamor for, I don't know what we'd use the money, I mean, I know what we could use the money for, but the Grant residents also don't want to pay higher taxes, so it's quandary. We'd have to work on it.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
Okay. So, Grant consists of about half gravel roads and half paved roads. There's a lot of maintenance to be done on both types of roads. As far as paving goes, last, when I was on the council, if somebody had lived on a gravel road and they wanted it paved, they had to get 75% of the homeowners on that road to petition the city. If you do not get that, you're not going to get your road paved, correct? So, these people have to be willing to pay the assessment to have that road done. The road policy was changed, maybe Jeff or Tom could answer that, I can't remember which year it actually was, to 51%. I don't agree with that. And also, there has been times where they'll go out and assess a road to be, you know, repaved or paved, and then they might group that in with another road. So, if one area, if one road agrees to do the paving, but the other people on the other road do not, they get no say in it. I don't think that's the way to do the road policy. And as Tom said, the budget, we only have so much money for that budget, unless we crank up everybody's taxes, I have no idea where you're going to find that extra money to have our roads perfect, but yes, they do need to be worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cremona.
Thank you. As I indicated earlier, this is the number-one issue that I'm finding when I'm speaking with residents, road policy. People want something changed or just want to be educated. And so, I think that's one of the number-one issues we need to look at is, okay, here's what we currently have. You know, are there other options that we can explore to get financing? Because, as Tom indicated, we're under the $5,000 resident mark, and so, finding other avenues that we may have in order to get financing for our roads. In addition, you know, we do have certain roads that are paved and some that are gravel. And so, I think respecting those homeowners that live on gravel roads, if they want to keep it gravel, allow it to stay gravel. And really, again, looking at our road policy and seeing what changes do we may want to make, or what other avenues can city council do to see other mechanisms that we can do for maintaining the roads so that, once they are paved, they can last as long as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cornet.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What steps would you take to ensure general maintenance and repair of the city's roads? Do you believe the annual budget to maintain Grant roads is sufficient? Why or why not?
Okay. So, to help, I would say, the first thing I'd want to do is try to set up some sort of comprehensive road plan that'll help educate, you know, the people. They can refer to it, to understand the state and the path of the roads going forward. I believe the mayoral candidate, Giefer, also had an excellent idea in his opening statement, of trying to go out and find other monies available from state, federal, county, whatever the case may be, to assist with the roads. And then, as the candidate Lobin said, make sure that we really do have the consensus of our citizens. We don't want to do anything that doesn't represent their interests as city council, so I think that is also imperative. The budget is probably a little low, but again, it's always that quandary of, do you raise taxes more than what is generally acceptable to maintain with costs as inflation continues? So, that's something that we'll have to do research and come to a better decision on. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Well, I would say the budget is not sufficient, and I hear other people mention, like, we'd have to crank up taxes. I don't think we'd have to crank up taxes. Most people I've talked to, almost universally, have said, Jeff, I don't mind, and this is just recently, in the past month as I've been campaigning, they said, Jeff, I won't mind paying a little extra taxes because they already know our local taxes are low, as long as that money's spent wisely and put towards our roads. And we can be more proactive with our road maintenance. We need to start that after, a couple of years after new road is built. But right now, we're so constrained with our budget that we can't keep on top of that, and ultimately, the life of our roads is not what it could be. And as I mentioned before, I'd like to work with other funding opportunities, either federal, state, there's a lot of programs out there that we could do to supplement a small bump in taxes to put towards our roads and make them safer and more drivable.
Thank you. Okay. Candidate Giefer, you'll be first on question number six. What is your vision regarding land use in Grant? What changes, if any, are needed to the current comprehensive plan?
So, I believe our current zoning, Chapter 32 zoning, was carefully, diligently prepared to protect Grant and preserve the rural heritage and keep us from being a densely populated community like Elmo. And our comprehensive plan, our city planner has worked with us to make sure that has the same goals. And that's one of the things I'm concerned right now, is Councilmember Carr has been advocating in recent meetings that we change our Chapter 32 zoning to remove the variance process for small, one-acre parcels of land. If we do this, which is against the advice of our city planner, city attorney, we will open the door for the Met Council to come in and turn us into another Lake Elmo. And most people, almost every person I've talked to in my campaign says that is definitely not something that we should do.
Thank you. Candidate Cornet.
So, I think we're all probably going to agree on a lot of this, but, you know, ensuring that we continue the rural heritage of Grant, making sure that the zoning laws are kept generally, pretty much how they are, because, you know, that's what's imperative to keeping Grant Grant. The other thing is around, you know, ensuring that businesses are able to thrive but stay within their bounds set by the CUP, so making sure they're not doing anything that they shouldn't be. And ensuring that we stay within the bounds that have already been set, the density, the, you know, minimum requirement to build, I think, is very important because that keeps a lot of those developmental pressures from the outside, to include the Met Council, away from Grant, to keep our, you know, nice vacation that I call home, home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Carr.
Yeah, just to address Mr. Giefer's comment, it's kind of funny. I got a call yesterday from somebody Mr. Giefer was talking to that knows me, and he was having a dialogue with him about the one-acre lot issue, and he thanked me for sending the postcard out that I sent that explained what actually happened at the meeting, in which, if you watched the June 25 tape, Mr. Giefer asked our planner, does the Met Council care about these lots? And she said, no. So, I don't know why Mr. Giefer's coming up with this. But anyway, he said that the thought that the Met Council would come in for these small lots is ridiculous, and Mr. Giefer, apparently, pardon my phone call with him, said, yeah, that's not exactly what Tom said, and this resident said, then why did you write it? I'm not advocating changing the comp plan. The comp plan and our ordinance should be the same, but the same rights for landowners that have a two-and-a-half-acre lot should apply to people that have a 2.2-acre lot, which are, there are certain things that are exempt, like frontage, setbacks, and they should have the same exemptions. That's all I talked about. I can't do it by myself. It's a council decision, and that's all we did was talk.
I'll call on you when all the questions have been answered. Candidate Cremona.
Thank you. Like many people have already indicated, the rural characteristics of Grant are what I would make sure to maintain with respect to land use and the vision for Grant, and so I don't see any changes needed to the lot size or density requirements or any changes to our comprehensive plan, as I think the people who drafted it have done a very thoughtful and comprehensive work to make sure that we are maintaining that country rural aspect of Grant that we all love, and it's why we all moved here. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
Yeah, so, in the 1960s, there were one-acre lots all over Grant. If you drive around the community, you will see them. There are several large areas of one-acre lots. Okay, so then, Grant moved to the 2.5-acre lot, and then on to the 10-acre lot density. So, currently, right now, if you have a 2.5-acre lot, 2.5-ish, you need to apply for a variance through the city to build there. So, if they are suited by Washington County, to be able to put a septic and well system there, right, with two different places to place that. And the city ordinances and codes are followed with, as Tom said, like setbacks, road frontage, what have you. They are allowed to build, right, on those 2.5-acre lots. So, what do you do with the people that have the one or 1-point-something acre lots that were plotted back in the 1960s? Do you take away the rights of those people? Sorry, I'm just going to say one more thing here. If I had five acres plus one, two separate PIDs, say I want to give that one acre to my son or my daughter to build on so that they too can live in Grant and raise their children here. So, if I give them the one-acre lot and the city refuses to give them a variance to build, providing it fits with Washington County's septic and well and the city ordinances as far as setbacks, road frontage for your driveway, what have you, is my son or daughter supposed to just like, oh, that's really pretty, I guess I'll just look at it for the next 30 years? Why can't we have the lots that were already plotted, given the same rights as the people with the 2.5? Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to your rebuttal.
Yeah. I encourage every resident to go and actually view the May and June meetings so they can see how Tom tried to convince the rest of the council to change our zoning process to make it easier for people that have one-acre lots so they don't have to pay the variance and save time for the council, so we don't have to listen to the variance process. The city planner and city attorney both advise us against this, and I, really, again, every citizen should watch that so they can see for themselves what Tom Carr wants to do.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to question.
Whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see.
That's okay.
Oh, thank you for calling that out.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, I think everybody should watch the meeting, and they can watch when Mr. Giefer asks our planner, does the Met Council really care? No, they don't care, not for these lots. That's not what I was doing. You know, going to the city council is supposed to be a discussion. Discussions happen. That doesn't mean anybody's going to do anything. We had a discussion. I actually made the motion to stop the discussion because I think we discussed it. It didn't look like the council was going anywhere with it, but I do think those people have land rights, and I don't think it would end well if we did not allow them to do anything. I think using this is not a way to, it's to win, but, you know, Mr. Giefer has thought it is, so.
Thank you. Anyone else have a rebuttal? Okay. Moving on to number seven, and first here is candidate Lobin. As a city council member, how will you encourage citizen input and feedback? How will you inform Grant residents about city council actions and decisions?
Could you read the first part again, please?
As a city council member, how will you encourage citizen input and feedback?
Okay. So, citizen input and feedback, that's a good one. When I was on the council, we had public comment, public input, and it's called two different, it means the same thing. People used to be allowed to come up to the podium, state their name and address, and either ask the council questions or bring up something that they think is important for the council to know. That has been played with over and over. Sometimes, we have a mayor that will only choose who he wants to come up and speak and not allow others to come up and speak. That has to stop. This is open to any resident in Grant to come and talk about whatever they so feel necessary, and we should sit there and we should listen to it. It's very important to engage the community. How to go about doing that, as Lindsay said, like, next door is a great avenue to reach out to the public. I'm not so sure about Facebook using that, but there are ways to get out, and just, you know, out talking to people. You're out cutting your grass. Somebody else is out cutting your grass. Stop and talk to them. Stop and visit with people, right? Thank you.
All right. Candidate Cornet.
So, I believe, as Tina had said, that, you know, encouraging the public input, people coming to the meetings is very important, you know, making sure that they know about it is also very important. But I think something that we can do to help, you know, twofold, help the transparency of this, is begin to, again, record the public input. I understand there were some language issues back in the day, but I believe that that's important to bring back to inform the rest of the residents, what other residents are, you know, concerned about. And I do think that, you know, all forms of social media could be a good way to inform the residents. I'm not a big next-door user. I think X would be a great way, but it is dangerous. You got to make sure that you put some limits on it, but do what you can to just get the word out that, you know, we're having these meetings, and they should come and voice what they want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Yeah, I mean, much the same as the other people here have said. We need to remove the time limits, record the meaning, record the input, and then the reaction that we give to the citizens that come up and speak. We don't need to smirk at them or, you know, make them feel like they're not welcome by just the attitude, and we deserve, they deserve a follow-up, too. They might not. They might not have the best questions or the best thoughts, but we can respect them and follow up on the questions and get back to them with answers. And that's something that we haven't really done. We just let them ask the questions, but it just dies there. And to increase engagement, too, we could, like I mentioned before, we could have like a Facebook page or something like that, that people could feel more comfortable posting questions on if they can't come to the meetings in person.
Thank you. Candidate Carr.
Yeah, I think it's more of the welcoming. I mean, I've said that before. I mean, you got to have people welcome to come. They got to feel engaged. They got to feel like they can reach out to city council members, and the city council members can reach back to them. I don't know how much of that has been happening. Also, it's city office. City office has to be more responsive, I think, to staff and residents and us. We need to be able to reach out to staff. It's a big communication issue that I think we got to work on a little bit. I think it's something I'm going to strive for, but I think to get the people there, we don't have to show up. They got to feel more welcome. And newsletter articles, we have that, but it's hard. It's really hard to get people to engage in government. I mean, I respect everybody up here that's decided to run. I mean, that's hard just to get them to do that, let alone the planning commission. So I hope we can get that back, but we got to start working on this phase first, so thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cremona.
Thank you. Sorry. You're fine. Like many people already indicated, we need more engagement at our meetings, and part of it, the first step, is just informing them that they're even happening. And then, when they're there, allowing that public comment to occur and having it recorded so that way the people who aren't there are able to watch that and then really kind of be able to put the pieces together of saying, here's how we came to this ultimate decision for our city. In addition, re-engaging that planning commission so we can get more people on board and more engaged in making that feedback of, here's how we want to see our city planned, and here's my input. I really liked Tina's idea of making sure it's a bigger group and a more diverse group of people so that we make sure that because Grant is not a cookie cutter city, there's a lot of different lots, a lot of different lot sizes. Getting everyone's input on that would be excellent. As to informing them on what's happening, particularly when there's a big decision between, in front of the council, I think it's important that our city council members take a moment and perhaps canvass a couple areas, going and knocking on doors, going to the people who may not be able to or have the time or the ability to come to a meeting and say, hey, here's what's before the council, what are your thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, your comment, candidate Lobin.
Pardon me?
Did you have a rebuttal comment?
I just wanted to add to, so something about Grant that I noticed over my time here is, you know, you can see there's five of us running, right? Three of us for council seat, two people for mayor. Getting people to engage in government is not an easy task. And I will say that the majority of the people, in my opinion, who move out to Grant, move out there to be left alone. Right? Door knocking is something that's very difficult for me because I am one of those people that when somebody comes to the door, I'm like, ugh, right? Just leave me to enjoy my Sunday, leave me be. So I think that it's going to take a lot of work, and what that actually entails yet is to be figured out because it is hard to get people engaged. Again, they want to be out on their properties, enjoy their properties, be left alone, so in order to get them to engage and come to the meetings or partake in the meetings or on the planning commission is going to take work from whoever the five council people are. Thank you.
Okay. I am looking at the time, and I think we'll only have time for one more question. And so here it goes. And candidate Cremona, you'll be first. How do you define sustainable development? What does that mean to you as a member of the city council?
So sustainable development, as we've all seen, the neighborhoods around us, the cities around us, development is happening. Whether we like it or not, there are going to be outward pressures for Grant to perhaps change. And so I think when we're having decisions become in front of our desk, we need to think, how is this decision going to impact us in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? Not just thinking about the couple of years ahead of us, because we want to be, to the extent growth does occur, we want to be very thoughtful and have it very concerted to make sure that we are keeping that rural, country aspect that we all love about Grant and protecting that in the best way possible, while at the same time, understanding that there are going to be these outward pressures that are going to want us to try to change Grant. And so making sure that we're being very thoughtful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Our comp plan was put together to address development and make sure that it's sustainable development and does preserve and protect the rural heritage of Grant. And the key parts of that are the five acre minimum and 10 acre density. And we should continue to use those and then also not change our zoning, like council member Carr has been advocating for us to do despite what he's been saying. And I encourage everyone, again, to check that out by actually viewing the May and June meetings. And that's it for me.
Okay. Candidate Lobin.
So in my opinion, the only way that Grant grows as far as housing is if you have some of these people with very large parcels who decide to hang it up here, retire, move, sell the property, right? So if you sell the property and you have many, many acres, that is likely going to get developed, right? So how do we address that? We must maintain our 10 acre density, the current policy as of now. We need to do that whether it's tomorrow, five years, 10 years, 15 years. We need to keep that comp plan in place, say no to the Met Council for coming in here and changing anything. It's, the city doesn't own, right? We don't own large properties. So the only way that you're going to increase housing is if a farmer or somebody with a large parcel sells that off. The only way to prevent mass housing from coming in here is for everybody on the council to say absolutely not no to the Met Council coming in, right? So we're going to work hard and keep that 10 acre density that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Candidate Cornet.
Not to beat a dead horse here, but maintaining the zoning is very important. We have to ensure that we're able to keep the 10 acre density. And it just came to the council right before I had joined another subdivision that was being put in place, and there was a little contention there. But after looking at all the ideas and the plans of the developer, the council, I think, came to a good decision on letting that proceed. And I think that's the way forward, is making sure that we have a good understanding of what developers want to do, make sure that stays within the bounds of our zoning, and then let those proceed, not trying to stifle it where it's wanted if it's done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Carr.
Well, yeah, I've been in Grant since 2001 as mayor. I've never, there's no lot sizes that have changed in Grant. The comp plan is basically, we've worked on the comp plan, we've changed a few things. But no, I don't plan on changing any of our density that's been established in 1982. However, there are things that come up in ordinance, and if we change them, it doesn't mean the Met Council is going to come and get us. We had event centers that were allowed anywhere, and that came up, and we changed it to allow them on county and state roads with 20-plus acres. So as things come up, we do change things at ordinance. It's not forbidden, and Met Council's not going to come and get us, but it does happen. And when we find things, as Mr. Giefer keeps referring to the smaller lots, like some I'm changing, no, that happens all the time. We have changed stuff. It's not the end of the world. So, and I believe in the land rights of those. He also mentioned something about, well, it's hard for the city council. No, I'm looking to be proactive with that discussion, and that's all we did, and nothing happened from it. But it's good to know we can discuss the city council without repercussions, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, yes. Your rebuttal.
Why am I nervous up here? I just forgot what I was going to say. Okay, I remember. All right, so maybe it's a question for those who are currently already on the council. I'm not sure if you are aware, but there is a one-acre lot that was built upon quite recently on the south end of Grant. So since that was allowed to happen, right, the city, to my understanding, didn't even know that was happening, right? So the building inspector approved it, Washington County approved it, and it was built. So now, what do you have to say to those who are in the same situation? Are you going to now come in and say, nope, sorry, we're only going to let one person do it?
Okay, that's time. And now we're going to move on to the closing statement. And I feel like I want to urge people to refrain from personal attacking in the final statement. And so first here would be candidate Cremona.
Thank you. Thanks again for having us. I think this was a really fun discussion, first time doing this. Any case, as I hope it's evident to everyone, I'm very excited and hopeful to be able to represent and serve our community on Grant City Council. I love living in Grant, it's really lucky. And also, I think Grant's really lucky. We have five really great people up here that are all have Grant's best interest at heart. I'm not trying to talk you out of voting for me, of course, but I feel like we're really lucky, and I think that really shows how great of a community Grant is, is that we have some really great people here, and we just want to make sure that we are maintaining and preserving that rural aspect that we all love, that that's why we all came here. And as city council member, that would be one of my goals, as well as looking at, like I said, the road policy. It's something that's been coming up as I'm talking to people, and let's figure out something we can do so at the very least, we can educate our residents about what's going on and really welcome them and saying, let's get involved, let's just start this planning commission. Please feel free to give your input because we're here for the residents, we're not here just for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Giefer.
Yeah. As a recently retired professional, I have the time, energy, and passion to serve Grant as the first full-time mayor that we've had. I've talked to people in the past where they've had issues and they went to the mayor, whether it was whoever was sitting in the mayor's chair at the time, and the responses were like, well, I don't have the time to do that, I'm sorry, that's the county's job, or whatever. And they said they weren't paid enough, et cetera, et cetera. I'm passionate about Grant, and I'm willing to put in the time and effort to listen to our citizens and be proactive in addressing their concerns and preserving the rural heritage of Grant for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Carr.
Yeah, I want to get Grant to where it's more, again, more welcoming. I think whether it's residents, council people, staff, I think they should all be allowed to give their statements, their speech, their talk, their opinions, and then we should respect that, not be negative about what they say, but just take it in, listen to it, literally listen to it, don't just hear it. And then move on from that and not be a negative place in the city. I think we need to be more positive. Negativity is not good. So, and moving forward, that's what I would like. I do it in my, what I do, to try to do it at the council, try to respect people, I do it in my campaigning, I do it with the residents, and they just want to be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lobin.
So as I stated earlier, I lived here for 18 years. I searched for years to find my place, little piece of heaven, as I call it, my little 10 acres. It meant a lot to me to find something like that after spending all that time on my grandma's farm. I felt I was in another world and free to run and enjoy the great outdoors and the animals. And living out in Grant, there's so much wildlife and so much scenery, and I will work my heart out to preserve that. I will work for every resident. In the past, there has been squabbling back and forth, and as Giefer said, sides, side, side, sides. Well, we can try to work to end that and work together as one unit. We are here for the residents, we are not here for ourselves, and if you are, you have a different agenda, and that's probably not good for Grant. So I will work for each and every one of you, that is my promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cornet.
After going out, campaigning, canvassing, talking to a large number of residents, I think what's most important is keeping their desires utmost in your mind, what is the wishes or the wants of your citizens of the city. You know, there's a lot that changes in this world, and it's nice to have Grant be that one little piece that doesn't change. Come back to home is always going to be home. So keeping that in the forefront, making sure that we listen to our citizens, be transparent with our citizens, and do everything we can to make sure that the quality of life and their well-being is, if not sustained, improved. And I thank you for your consideration in November. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for Grant Mayor and City Council. Our website, l w v w b l a dot org, has listings for all our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for those forums. You can view the recording of this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. You can also look for it on your local cable channel at times of their choosing. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting is September 20th to November 4th, and election day is November 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.